I'd like to welcome you to your school board service and also to our webinar this evening. I speak on behalf of the SBA when I tell you how important we all believe school board service is, and we thank you for your involvement. I am Susan Holson, the Director of Education Services here at the Vermont School Boards Association. I'm joined this evening by Carrie Lamb, our Director of Operations, who you will get to know very well because she does everything there is to do here at the SBA. If you have any technical difficulties through the course of the hour or so that we'll be together, please call one of those two phone numbers, that's the switchboard at the SBA, and Carrie will help you out. So, a little bit about webinar logistics. We have a question box that you should be able to access from the dashboard in front of you. Please feel free to comment and question at any time, and Carrie will be monitoring those questions and summarizing them as we go, and then we'll have more opportunity for that kind of discussion later on at the end of the program. We'll also be sending you an evaluation form for this webinar as soon as you log out when it's over, and we'll be following up with emails, giving you the summary of the information, the PowerPoint slides, and the other resources that we talk about. You should also know, and part of what we'll be doing tonight is sort of giving you a run-through of the resources that the SBA makes available to all board members. We have a YouTube channel on the SBA, which you're welcome to join, and we also will sort of walk through the website and the resources there. So, tonight, we're going to run through really what is the role of a school board and what is the job of a school board member. We'll review the essential work of Vermont School Boards, which is a proprietary tool developed here by the SBA to help board members in their work. We'll look at education governance in Vermont, which is in an ongoing transition. We'll take your questions, and I'll give you a little bit of information about the Vermont School Boards Association and the resources that we have available to you. First of all, the role of the school board, I think, is very often misunderstood, and it's really important for you to understand that your job as a school board member is to be a trustee on behalf of your community to provide oversight of public education. So, your job is really about the vision and direction of the school board and public education in your system, and you all could take that on through oversight and reviewing accountability. It's critical to remember, you are not an educational administrator in your district. The board, think of it this way, the board goes first and last. You go first by setting a vision, determining policy, outlining parameters and priorities, and all of that is really to clarify for the superintendent and administration what their role is, because they are the education experts, and you need to give them the flexibility to lead and manage and operate the school system and to use their skills and creativity. And we'll talk more about the relationship between the board and the administration. And so, the board goes last because one of your important jobs is monitoring the progress and assuring accountability as you continue to move education in your district forward. So, there are really three important outcomes that you'll be paying attention to and be monitoring. This is really the crux of your job. You want to make sure that there's high-quality education for every student in the district. You want to make sure that you're getting a good return on the public's investment, and you have an obligation to make sure that the system is efficient, effective, and operates ethically. So, I mentioned we have a lot of resources on our website. This is a screenshot of the homepage. Perhaps you've had a chance to visit it already. If not, I certainly encourage you to do so and take some time and dig around and see what's out there for you. One of the areas on the site is this area called "toolkits", which provides consolidated information on a variety of issues. The one we're going to take a look at today is the essential work of school boards. And this is a screenshot of the landing page for that toolkit. So, the first of the domains, as we call them, is to make sure that you have a vision and that you engage the community in developing and maintaining currency in your vision. So, what does that really mean? Well, it means that you need to make sure that there are opportunities for the community to participate in the conversation about the educational vision, that you take their input, and that you monitor progress on their behalf, making policy and budget decisions to support that vision. If you're particularly interested in the whole idea of community engagement, which has become very important for a lot of school boards in the last few years, I'll put in a plug here. We have an engagement workshop. It's a day-long opportunity to really dig into the idea of community engagement. It's taking place on April 14th in Montpelier. It's the beginning of a new grant-funded project called Effective Equitable Government, and you can get more details about that and registration information on the SBA website. And while I'm at it, I'll put in a shameless plug here for the Think Big Workshop, which starts next week, sorry, starts this week, focusing on involving the community in establishing and monitoring a vision. And the dates for that are Thursday, March 15th, is that right? The 15th, yes. In Winuski, Monday, March 19th in Hartford, March 21st in Manchester, and March 27th in Linden. Those meetings are from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and I really encourage you and the rest of your board to join us at one of those workshops. We're going to really dig in deep. So, the next of the domains in the Effective School Board Toolkit is adopting policy. Arguably, developing and maintaining policy for school districts is the central job of the board. Policies articulate the values and concerns of the board as trustees of the community for the school district. So, the board delegates authority to the administration to further interpret policies, which is often done through written procedures. And then, the board has a responsibility to monitor for compliance and also to ensure that the policies are kept up to date. So, as far as compliance goes, if the board determines that something is important enough to be addressed in policy, then it's important enough to monitor and make sure that you understand how it's being communicated and enacted in your district. I mentioned we were going to talk about the Board-Superintendent partnership. This is another really, really critical aspect of school board work, and arguably, the most important decision a board makes is hiring a qualified superintendent to lead and manage education in the district or supervisory union. By Vermont statute, the superintendent is the chief executive officer for the supervisory union in district, which makes him or her accountable for the operations of the entire school system. So, the takeaway here is that boards provide oversight, but you do not manage the day-to-day operations of a school system. One of the ways you make sure that this is a healthy and working partnership is with mutual accountabilities. The board needs to provide clear direction and set priorities for the superintendent, who then is in turn accountable to deliver on those priorities. So, it's a two-way street there. I don't need to tell you right after Town Meeting Day that a big piece of board work is developing a budget. You need to make sure that the resources are available to deliver on the educational mission that you've established as a board. And the flip side of that is, once approved by your voters, the board's got an obligation and a responsibility to provide high-level financial oversight to make sure that the resources are being properly managed on behalf of the community. Managing the resources is critical to achieving the education mission, just as assuring there are adequate resources is also a critical piece of the budget cycle. Again, it's a high-level oversight, so you don't need to get in the weeds on this one, but you do need to understand how the resources are being allocated. Next thing, and I've hit on this because it really fits under each of these domains, is monitoring progress. The board is accountable to the community to ensure that the district makes reasonable progress in achieving outcomes for students and that the system operates in compliance with all policies, laws, and regulations. So, the board needs to regularly monitor both of these areas. And in order for administrators to be able to produce evidence related to these areas, the board needs to clearly identify the outcomes it expects based on the vision, policy, strategic plan, and goals of the district. So, it comes full circle. I'll throw in another shameless plug for our upcoming Think Big Workshop, because in addition to focusing on mission, it also talks about monitor, we'll dig into some monitoring tools and the importance of monitoring. And again, the dates for that are two days from today. That would be March 15th in Winuski, March 19th in Hartford, March 21st in Manchester, and March 27th in Linden. All of those are from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Finally, there are a lot of bits and pieces that would fall under this last domain of effective and ethical operations. As elected officials, you must act with integrity and adhere to the highest ethical standards. That includes a pretty strict enforcement of a conflict of interest policy, because any even perceived conflict of interest really dilutes the board's ability to be effective. Effective operations are categorized by well-organized meetings with agendas that focus discussion and decision-making, and that is really one of the responsibilities that the board chair takes on with your superintendent. Engaged and informed board members are also critical to being effective. If you don't do your homework before your meeting, when you receive your board packet, you're not really going to be able to effectively do your job. And then, it's also important that you're aware of the practices and protocols and policies that comply with Vermont education law. The essential work of school boards, I mentioned earlier, is a proprietary tool developed by us at the SBA. Here is a list of the full-length, two-and-a-half-hour live workshops that we will be conducting around the state beginning in about 10 days. And the final presentation will be a consolidated version in a webinar on April 23rd if you're not able to make it to any of the live presentations. I strongly encourage new board members to attend one of these workshops. Find one that's geographically convenient for you. Wait till the snow stops, perhaps, if it's ever going to stop. But attending these gives an opportunity to really expand your understanding of the components of school board work and also to have interaction with other new board members in the state, so you get to develop a sense of camaraderie that you understand you're not the only one taking on this new position that you may or may not clearly understand. Now, let's jump right into a situation that I'm going to guess most of you will encounter during your school board tenure. Take a minute to read this case study on the role of school board members, and then answer the questions in the question box, please. Carrie, have we had any responses coming in on this?
Yes, we are just beginning to get them.
Excellent.
Let me know when you'd like me to start reading them.
Please do.
All right.
So, let's start with, how do you react when somebody stops you in the supermarket?
Jennifer says I would acknowledge her feelings of frustration and encourage her to follow up directly with her teacher first and her school principal second. Shannon said, ask her if she has discussed this with a teacher. Explain the chain of command, teacher, principal, superintendent, board. Mike said, I would mention that I can only speak for myself, not the board. I would urge her to have a meeting with the teacher or principal. Bradley says, this is clearly an issue for the administration, first at the school level, then the district level. Jeremy said, express sympathy that she is having difficulties. Ask if she has talked to teachers and principals. Tell her you will address it with the superintendent. Maria said, ask her if she's talked to her child's teacher, principal about this. Jeremiah says, listen and encourage her to follow the chain of command. This should start with talking to the teacher. Emily said, I would thank her for sharing her concerns with me and ask her if she has already spoken of her concerns with the teacher. Tori said, I guess I would start with compassion about how that can be worrisome. Then, I would see if she has talked first to the teacher or second to the principal, and what had happened then. I would suggest she follow up with them. If she wasn't satisfied, she could get back in touch with me. Bradley said, suggest she contact the principal first as a starting point. Josh says, we do not directly run the school, so that would be an issue to take up with the principal. Melissa said, I would react with sympathy and say that that must be a frustrating situation, that I'd ask if they discussed it with the school principal. That would be the next step, as this would be something dealt with at the administrative level rather than the board. Lindsay says, listen to understand. Ask if she has discussed the problem directly with the teacher and school administration. Trish says, I would tell her that I understand her feelings and agree that it sounds like an unfortunate situation. I would encourage her to speak with either the teacher herself first or the school principal. And finally, oh, we have a couple more. Emily said, then I would tell her that we have a chain of command, and that if she is concerned, set up a meeting with the principal. Josh said, I would also, I would let her know I understand and urge her to talk to the teacher. And Scott says, have you seen the problem-solving page on the school site? That is all of them.
Well, I got to say, that gives me a lot of hope for the future of our school districts in Vermont, because the fact that so many of you addressed the chain of command issue and also made the distinction between the administrative role of the staff and the board's role as overseers, all puts you on a great trajectory. So, what we, each district should have a policy on handling complaints and also on the role of the chain of command. But generally speaking, if it is a classroom situation, first step is the teacher, and next would be the principal. So, many of you talked about the empathy that you would offer, and certainly, that is a natural reaction. So, you receive the complaint, you follow the policy and procedures about chain of command. Don't forget to tell your chair, your board chair, and also the administrator, the superintendent, that you have had this feedback from a community member. That doesn't obligate you in any way, but they ought to know what's going on in the community. And then, if it's appropriate, you can follow up later with the woman that you bumped into to see if she has pursued further action and whether her needs have been met, her questions have been answered. It's very important to stay out of it at this level. The board is the final level of a complaint appeal. You serve a quasi-judicial role, and sometimes, we'll have to mediate here disagreements between a parent or a classroom full of parents and administration. And you need to maintain neutrality up until that point. So, I think you all got that message pretty clearly, and I'm happy to hear it. So, here are some recommendations for new school board members. You really want to maintain those couple of critical pieces of your work, top-of-mind and high-level oversight, high-quality education for every student. Nobody is expecting you, nor should you be expecting to get into a classroom and start teaching to make that happen. Just, and a good return on investment for your taxpayers, just like no one expects you to be teaching, no one expects you to be doing the books either. But you need to know how to read the financial reports that you're getting. Your job is not to run the schools. I think that came through pretty clearly in your answers with the case studies, so I'm really pleased with that. You want to make sure that you show up at meetings with passion and commitment to the education system, keeping the big picture in mind, and following good governance practices and policies. That means knowing the job of the board versus the job of the administration. Obviously, you need to follow the law and uphold high ethical standards, avoiding conflicts of interest, both real and perceived. And it's important to also remember, and somebody hinted at this in your answers, the role of an individual board member is basically nothing, by which I mean you have no legal authority, you may not speak on behalf of the board. The power legally rests in the board as a total body. The board has one voice, and I think it's hard to get used to that, because most board members have opinions. And so, it's important to develop good relationships with your other board members so that you come to that kind of understanding and ability to work that way. Okay, so, we're going to switch a little bit now to governance. What does education look like in Vermont? So, from the legal side, the legislature passes laws governing education and municipal government. The courts interpret the laws and the constitution. The governor and the state board execute the laws and look at some of the regulation. And the agency of education executes. So, they carry out the laws as they exist. Within a district, we've evolved. So, what has been the primary governance structure of Vermont school districts and supervisory unions for the last 20 years anyway, is now sort of morphing, thanks to, you may have heard of Act 46, which is about the attempt to consolidate and merge school districts for the benefit of centralization and economies of scale. But the traditional governance structure is that you have a supervisory union board, which is composed of representatives from all of the school board districts within the supervisory union. So, members get elected to their local district board and then selected by their district board to represent that district at the supervisory union level. The superintendent is actually employed by the supervisory union board, but all of the school boards also work with that person closely. And each district typically has represented one school, so it may be your town school, or it may be that you have had a town school and a supervisory union-level high school, which has multiple towns reporting in, and that then becomes another district, as is the case in this example, where you see you've got pre-K through 6, pre-K through 8, high school. They're all in there sort of on equal footing, but there's not a lot of continuity here, following a student from kindergarten through 12th grade. Enter the era of consolidation, and what we're seeing a lot of now is these partially consolidated governance structures. So, there's a supervisory union board, and there may be a consolidated district or two within that supervisory union structure. So, here we have Consolidated District School Board, one. There are two different schools there. They may be neighboring, probably are neighboring towns that have chosen to consolidate their administration and yet are still part of a supervisory union because other districts within the same SU have not yet consolidated, or maybe won't consolidate. These partially consolidated districts are the result of either transitions toward a more consolidated structure or they are a compromised structure that encompass the different districts in the supervisory union. Finally, a completely consolidated district would look like this. You have one board, a supervisory district board, with one superintendent who oversees all of the schools in that district. And so, they're no longer differentiated by which town they're located in in terms of management. It doesn't mean you're losing your local school. So, with that framework, let's close with just reviewing your central responsibilities as a board member. You need to make sure you're getting a high-quality education for all your students, a good return on investment for your taxpayers, and effective, efficient, and ethical operations. So, what questions do you have as new board members? What's the most pressing question that you need answered? Or do you have general questions? I'm happy to take those, too.
Susan, we do have one question from earlier. Tori was wondering if you could define the word trustee.
Sure. In plain English, what it means is that the people who have elected you trust you to oversee the system, you and other board members, to oversee the system on their behalf. So, it's not saying that they don't want to necessarily have a voice, but they understand that you can't have every citizen checking the books. So, they have put their trust in you to make sure that the education system is running smoothly and effectively. Does that answer the question?
I believe so. We have a few more coming in now.
Great.
Let's see, I have one that says, how to get, I think believing means superintendent, to build talent and expertise in administration?
Well, the way the hiring system works within the structure, really, the only person, the only role that is hired by the board, and again, it's at the supervisory union board level, is the superintendent. The superintendent is then responsible for hiring the principals and other central office and building-level staff. and building level staff. So most boards have built into their budget some professional development, but that is not administered by the board. It's really the superintendent's call on how that is best executed to meet the needs of the staff. I'm not sure if I've really captured the question as you've asked it. I think you're suggesting that perhaps there are building personnel or central office personnel who are not performing. And again, that gets deferred to the superintendent. They need to be accountable to the board, indicating that they are managing the people in the buildings and evaluating them. But it is not the board's job to actually do those evaluations.
Okay, I have some more. Emily is wondering when and how they bring up their vision. She said, "When I started my first meeting, it seemed like it was mostly approving budgets, hires, and other housekeeping."
And that sadly is the case. There's a lot of day-to-day or month-to-month work to be done. Most boards opt to have a retreat. Often, it's a full day in the summer, or occasionally they spread it out over a couple of evenings. But it's when the operational part of the work is quiet, because school's not in session, so things tend not to be quite so active. And it gives the board an opportunity to work on the higher-level strategic planning and vision that guide all of the other decisions. So I would check with your board chair about that and find out if that hasn't been scheduled, whether it's going to be, and how your particular board takes that step back to get the big picture.
Wonderful. I have a question from Josh now. "Where's the best place to get a good overview of Act 46 that reads in layman terms, not legal document form? My board lost its members that were on the study committee."
Ah, hmm, I would...
I know on our website we have...
We do have some resources on our website in the section called, I believe it's under the tab called Advocacy, and also Services. There's a lot of information about Act 46 there. And another great resource would be the Agency of Education.
All right. So Tori is asking about open meeting law. She said, "Could you talk about open meeting law? Ask her to be a little more specific." And she said, "In basic terms, how does it apply to school boards?" That's a pretty broad question.
It is a broad question, and we have, we really defer to the Secretary of State in terms of interpreting open meeting law because it applies to agencies and organizations in all aspects of government. Essentially, open meeting law says that if there is a quorum of board members, in this case, you are obligated to advise the public in advance that this meeting is going to exist, that would be the warning, and also assure that there is time for public comment at the meeting on the agenda. Those are probably the two biggest aspects of it, as how it relates to school board work. The idea about the philosophy behind it is transparency. You are, after all, acting on behalf of your communities, and so they should be entitled to see what it is you're doing.
Right, and I believe we have some information in our essential workbook as well on that, don't we?
Yes, but it may not be 100% up to date. When we send out information after this webinar concludes, I'm happy to send out the document from the Secretary of State's office as well.
Great. So Jennifer has a question. She said, "I represent a K-12 choice town that received a request at our town meeting to explore all alternatives to our current operating model. This may include merging with another district, but it may also include working with our local schools to tighten their enrollment procedures. And I'm working to understand what resources are available to us and how to implement a comprehensive study that examines changes to our tax rate and property values while ensuring that we continue to provide a high-quality education for our students in an effective and efficient manner."
Wow, that's a big one. I'm not sure that I can direct you to any single resource. There has been, there have been many study groups around the state looking at issues of consolidation. The Agency of Education will have some data that they have been beginning to collect as districts are now into year two, and in a couple of cases, year three of their merged districts. But, you know, it's the great experiment in some respects. There's not a lot of data to use yet that can either support or, that can support either position of unifying or not unifying. There are central services that can be shared, which leads to efficiencies, but that's sort of the minutia, and I think you're asking a much bigger picture question.
And given the specificity of that district, she may want to have a conversation with Nicole or something regarding that, what they're looking for. She might be able to help her out a little bit more.
Right.
Okay, I have some other great questions here. Melissa says, "People from the community now send me and other board members emails with their thoughts and opinions. How do boards handle this kind of public comment coming outside of a board meeting?"
Well, that's a good question, and it speaks to the digital piece of the interpretation of open meeting law. Because even emails that circulate through board members, if it's a quorum, are considered a meeting. They're open record, public records. So the first thing I would assure is that your board chair is part of that conversation, and it's really the chair's responsibility to curtail that kind of input and simultaneously to assure that it's disseminated to all board members. But the work happens at the meeting. So one good sort of rule of thumb relative to email interchange is if you are communicating with your board, you should really not be initiating any communication that goes to all board members, because there's that public records issue. And when you are, should you have the occasion to do that, rather than list all of your board members in the two line of your email, if you BCC them, blind copy them, when somebody hits reply, it will not reply all. And so that takes a piece of that open communication and shuts it down a little bit. But most email correspondence should really be typically directed to the board chair, who will share it in the open meeting at public meeting time.
Great, we have another great question here. Emily said, "Is it appropriate to express personal opinions during meetings? I understand we act as one voice and vote, but it is poorly seen to disagree or something that might be divisive during a meeting. If not, when can we express those ideas or opinions?"
Well, you're entitled to express your ideas, your personal opinions, at a meeting in discussion. But it's really important to do so in a respectful and ethical way, rather than to make it personal. So your personal opinion should really take a backseat to the fact, to what you believe is for the overall good of the educational system. Again, you are representing your community. You may be representing a particular point of view, and you need to identify that that's your personal point of view, which affects this particular discussion and/or decision. And then the critical thing is, when the board takes an action, it is incumbent upon all board members, whether you supported that point of view or not, to embrace and accept the board's decision.
Wonderful. I have a little follow-up from Jeremy. He said, "So we should not respond to emails that are sent to us? I'm unclear."
I would direct them to the board chair, or in some cases, the board has chosen, identified some other official spokesperson. But typically, there is one person, and often it is the chair, who addresses the public. So if the newspaper comes a calling, or individuals in the community, that, they all get channeled through the one person. If it's a matter of, just a matter of information, you know, "Can you tell me what happened at XYZ discussion at your board meeting last week?", you should direct that person to the minutes of the meeting, which need to be posted within five days.
Wonderful. Nope, sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead. We have answered all the questions, unless there is anyone else that have any.
No, we'll move on.
I think we're good.
Okay. So just a little bit, I want to just introduce you to the Vermont Business School Boards Association, because we are a membership-owned organization, and you are now members. So you are the ownership here. This is the mission statement and vision statement for the VSBA, the emphasis on public education, supporting all school boards to serve as effective trustees. That's where we start, and here's where we take that. So part of what we do as an organization is we are the collective voice for school boards and school board members in the state. My colleague, Sue Saglowski, who is our Director of Policy and Legal Services, as well as our Executive Director, Nicole Mace, are both called in regularly to testify and to inform policy decisions at all various levels of state government. And the flip side of that is they also keep our members informed about what's going on in public policy deliberations. And they do that in a variety of methods, but you will be getting an education legislative report on a weekly basis during the legislative session. It hones in specifically on the issues that are being discussed and bills that are being discussed that relate to education. We send out legislative alerts when there's something that needs a quick response. Sometimes we're looking for more board members to show up and swarm the statehouse, or just to be kept apprised of what's going on when it's a really timely thing. And we also do an annual legislative update webinar very early in the legislative season to just share the landscape as we see it. We also support school boards directly with, for lack of a better term, I'll call it consulting services. You can call or email anybody on staff when you have questions about board operations, roles, responsibilities, education law. We will not represent you, but we can tell you what a law is and how it is utilized. We offer ongoing training and conferences. I shared with you the upcoming ones that are already scheduled, but we keep those going year-round. We will come out, you know, I travel around the state and work with boards on different subjects. We also have regular webinars. We have annual regional meetings that take place near where you are, and an annual conference every October. For the last, I don't know how many years, Carrie, it's been at Lake Maury Resort, and it's a two-day event, and usually has a primary focus that is relevant to school boards. We're also available to help you plan your retreats and facilitate meetings when you want to make sure that all board members are able to be involved and not have to maintain neutrality, just to step back and run something. We send out regular email updates. Our website is chock-full of information and resources for you. We offer specific consulting services to districts around superintendent search, superintendent evaluations, strategic planning, governance issues, consolidation implementation, and Vermont education policy. We do have a whole section on the website about collective bargaining supports. And in fact, in, starting April 14th and running through May 5th, Saturdays, we have a collective bargaining support workshop coming up. That's a most-of-the-day workshop. Details on that are on our website. It's, again, a traveling road show, so you catch us in a town near you. We also have publications that we put out. The Vermont Education Law Book is a consolidation of the laws that govern education in Vermont. It's updated annually. And we send out member newsletters encapsulating the happenings and events around the state that are useful for board members. We do board development opportunities. So I mentioned the negotiations workshop, Effective Engaged Governance Workshop, I mentioned that earlier, that's the one about community engagement. Live workshops and webinars, we've got Think Big coming up, and the Essential Work of School Boards Touring, I showed you those dates. They are at multiple locations around the state. And we send out VSBA newsletters of other board development opportunities that are coming up, as well as the regional meeting and the annual meeting that I mentioned earlier. This is our staff. We are a small office completely dedicated to your needs. Nicole Mace, our Executive Director, is an attorney, as well as a very well-informed spokesperson. You've probably seen or heard her commentary on matters educational. Sue Saglowski, Director of Legal and Policy Services, she is haunting the statehouse during session and is available to help you on matters of Vermont policy, law, and your own district policies. I'm the Director of Education Services. I'm available for board development work, either specific to your district and/or statewide. And you've already met Carrie Lamb, who has been helping throughout this entire process. Here again are the dates for the Essential Work of School Boards workshops. I hope to be able to meet each and every one of you in person. I cannot undersell how useful this is for new board members. We have some boards around the state who come out, the whole board comes out annually to these meetings. They're really designed for new board members, though having that veteran voice is also very helpful. So I want to thank you again, not just for participating, but also for serving. Being a school board member can be a difficult and sometimes lonely existence, particularly when things get heated and controversial. We really appreciate, all of us here really appreciate, the commitment that you've made to public education in our state and to our youth. Because without volunteers like you, we would not have the system that we have. We'd not be as successful as we are. I mentioned at the beginning that when you log out of this webinar, you will be sent an email with an online evaluation. And I really urge you to please fill that out. We want to make sure that we're providing you with the information and services that you want and need. And the only real way we have to know that is to get your feedback in this evaluation. So please do take care to do that. It won't take you very long, I promise. And if there's nothing else, I want to thank you all for your time this evening. Stay safe with the snow, and get out and enjoy it, because it sure is pretty. Thank you very much, and good night.